Good evening, I'm gonna say that because it is dark out. My concern once it's dark, it's evening, so good evening. Welcome to the Plimpton School Committee meeting for Monday, November 28th. I'm not sure when November went, but there you go. For visitors today, we have Mrs. Goodman and Ms. Quadrozzi. So, thank you for joining us. We'll try and keep it entertaining and as brief as possible. I'm not sure I'm gonna promise actually either though, but we'll try. So, there we go. We have first up Minutes from October 24th. Any comments, changes, thoughts, additions?
Motion to approve the Minutes from our October 24th meeting.
Do you have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Correspondence? I didn't see, I haven't, okay, so we're all set with that. And then, next up for new business would be the MASBO Transportation Review.
So, I can describe a little bit and I'm sure Jason might be able to chime in if that's okay?
Yes.
So, we had a subcommittee that was meeting on the possibility of changing start times for the school. And in the process of doing their research, they learned about a program where the Mass Association of School Business Authorities comes in and does a transportation review. And as part of the review, they look at whether or not, what some of the cost factors may be in changing start times. And if there's any way to rearrange schedules where it would have less of an impact on the schools. We did a little further research and I reached out and spoke to the person, John Crafton, who organizes the review. The total cost of the review runs about $5,900. And if we were to decide to all chip in, it would be percentage-wise per pounds. As part of the review, you have a packet explaining what they come in and do. On the first page, they will come in and they meet with the transportation team. My team. And Christine, and they also would meet with the bus company. They would meet with the principals. And apparently, they actually ride the buses. They review different impacts on the buses. For instance, Plimpton's very rural, was spread out very far, so it's not as easy to make some changes. Kingston is more dense, but some places have sidewalks and some don't. So, you can't always just assume children can walk to meeting places foregoing it. Each town has its own issues, let's say. And so, I'd be very curious to see how this all works out. But they've been doing this for a while. They have a team of people that comes in and meets with our district. Part of the problem we have is that when we go out to bid for a bus contract, we get all of one proposal. We get one bid. So, we really don't have any competition. We're at their mercy in terms of costs and what they can offer to us. However, in the effort of trying to make sure to do due diligence with our budget, there may be the possibility of having some cost savings. None of us can see it because all of our buses are full. We seem to, we feel like we have a good layout, but it will be good to either have that confirmed or if somebody with a new set of eyes looks at it, you can find some cost savings for us. If it turns out that they also have some ideas on the changing start times, that's sort of a bonus. We initially went in looking at it for those reasons, but the more we talked about it when it came to the possibility of saving money, that's really where it's sort of caught hold for us. Because our bus transportation costs are extremely high and I meant to figure out what it is. Do you know what the topic is, Christine?
What is it for Dennett?
Well, or for, in total? Or just Dennett?
Dennett is $110,000.
Okay, which is actually quite a bit considering the proportion of our budget. It's just over $2 million if I remember right. So, it's pretty substantial.
That's business.
Yeah. So, if we were to do this, Silver Lake has voted that they are very interested in pursuing this. And we established what we call a scope of services document. And this is what we would ask them to look at if we all, if all four school committees vote to do this. That they would identify any inefficiencies that may exist to review pertinent documents and to make sure that we have good contracts, to recommend any measures that would improve the efficiency of our system and hopefully save us some money. And again, you can read what some of the options are. But it's, it is something that would take about three days. The total cost is about $5,900 for the actual review, and then we have to pay expenses. Since it is three people coming and we're unsure if they would need to be put up in hotel, food, all those issues, that's what we would be responsible for. I put in a very conservative estimate of $2,000, $1,500 to $2,000. So, the maximum I believe it would cost would be $7,900. It may be less, but I don't believe it would be more than that. If we were, if Plimpton were to choose to participate in this also, and we do need all the towns to participate, I think, to make this work, it would be $474 would be your percentage. Again, it's not something that we had budgeted for. It would come out of this year's budget, but the costs are not that substantial that we don't believe it can be absorbed through other means. Did I miss anything?
I think Superintendent Black would lay that out perfectly. But my interest, and this is a compliment to the administration of this building and the staff, since I've been on school committee, the most frequently asked thing, parents have come to me about this bus issue and the amount of time their children spend on the bus. If we can have a third-party objective group come in and do basically what's a forensic audit of our transportation system and give them some ideas of how we can improve, it seems like short money on Plimpton's part to participate in the program.
And it seems like it does really three things. One is that, two, it looks at and validates sort of the transportation plan that we have in place for the town. And three, it should therefore also provide some numbers to potential change in start times as far, if that is something that is determined to explore additionally. You actually have something that is firmer with that about what a financial impact it would be, because we didn't have that.
Right, exactly.
You know, and so that's, I think that's, that seems to be a pretty good thing. And I guess additionally is that, you know, we will have to absorb this in the budget.
Yes.
You think we can? And so, as a result, it isn't going to add-on costs going forward. So, it seems like a very reasonable thing to do.
So, if the committee, do you have any other questions regarding the program?
No, Jason answered what I thought.
Okay.
Well, we're running time.
Okay.
I mean...
It is very long. Again, you know, Plimpton is quite spread out and we have to have the buses go to each of the schools, where actually, in some ways, it would be easier for a Plimpton child to hop on a Kingston bus, but that doesn't work that way. So, you know, we have to each go to each of their own towns and their schools. So, I don't know if it'll be worthwhile, but it has the potential to be worthwhile. And I think, again, in the sense of due diligence, I think it's not a lot of money and potentially could provide us some cost savings and/or time savings, because some of our students are on the buses for a fairly long period of time.
And their information about, you know, what could be done to even alleviate that issue.
Exactly.
And that should be a question that is asked particularly for, I don't know if kids are on the buses long in Kingston, but...
No, I don't know if they are. One of the things...
But for Plimpton, and I would assume Halifax has a similar issue, that should be one thing that we, if you were asking to look at. And then, it's a, it's a, it's a cost question, you know? Okay, you can add, you know, for instance, you could add one more bus, which would then cover the cost of X, but we reduce times on the bus by Y. And then, that's a decision that needs to be made by school committee and the community about whether that, that is a worthy spend of money. I mean, if we have an idea of four buses costs $110, I guess we have an idea of what per bus it costs. But still, it's, we have that information so that we can understand that.
The other piece, so just so you know, is they're all shared buses? If Plimpton added a bus, it would be, it would not be a shared bus? So, I think it would cost twice as much?
Instead of being $27, it would be $52,000.
But I think the point is, is...
Right, no, but just to let you know.
...cost the whole thing, it may make, there may be some sense in having someone actually look at that and evaluate to, you know, to find places where things, you know, tweak and so on and so forth.
Yeah, no, it is, it, we have a very complex system. For instance, like, they're all shared buses except we have so many children in Kingston, Kingston has to pay for a full bus. So, everything's shared but one bus in Kingston. So, you know, it's, it's trying to, you know, manage things as well as possible, but it's, there's no, there's no easy task. So, I'll add that, that's a, that's a great suggestion.
I mean, just to get the information?
Yeah.
Doesn't mean we have the ability to exercise on some of the options?
Absolutely.
But we need to have the information to, so do you need a motion from us?
Yes, please.
Make a motion for Plimpton to participate in the MASBO Transportation Review Program and share its cost.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, on to unfinished business. Actually getting kind of funny. Water treatment?
Since our last meeting, I met with the company, Pillburn Water. I've met with them twice. They've worked their procedure out to kind of take a look at everything and they were hoping to send me an estimate by the end of this week.
Okay.
We've heard nothing from the other companies.
And maybe nothing else other than that one, or larger, last estimate?
Yes.
Okay. All right, some more to come. Playground, safety, accessibility, and modernization?
I have some phone calls into Joe Dufour from O'Brien Systems. I don't think he's in his office very often, but he has a couple messages waiting for him. So, hopefully, he'll be able to send something along shortly.
And is that, is that additional suppliers or is that the same people that came up?
That's the gentleman who came up and did the site visit, myself and Peter.
We're just looking to get some additional information.
He was going out to look at some of his suppliers and also to do the design on a CAD program to give us an outline of some ideas that he had for the, for the location.
Okay. Which will start to get us towards some notional idea of what we could or couldn't do.
Correct.
Yeah. Yeah, because we do, I mean, it doesn't seem like it now, but March will be here before we know it. If that's, if that's, well, and that's really more for our planning purposes, because we're going to do CPA, it would be next year that we would have to do that.
But we might have to entertain multiple funding sources, so March would be a good time.
And we would have to get that sort of figured out while ahead of COVID application to CPA about what we want to do.
Absolutely.
On to standing committees. Administrative review?
We met, we reviewed, I'm sure it continues, we're still on track for the timeframe that we're trying to do. Would you call that evaluation? Right. We talked about the shared cost for, I don't know, we getting into that? We're not really getting into that yet, just being...
We will, we'll vote on the share at the next year's meeting.
We took your recommendations and we were forward. Everything was well prepared. I don't think there's really any questions for anybody that that means. The action, the formation, the case.
With negotiations, we have a first meeting set up with the teachers' meeting, maybe sixth of December.
Something's about right.
So, yeah, the comments time.
Great.
Unit 31, I don't think there was a meeting there?
Not yet. Probably January, February, sell the share cost budget.
Okay.
PAC? PAC has a meeting this Wednesday. Kathy Sheldon, the longtime executive secretary of COVID Mary Collaborative, retired and we had a retirement party for her. It was attended by many current and past faculty of the PAC. It was a, it was a great time. We had the treasurer out that read through the books and they got a clean billing, which really, all the credit goes to Jill Corrier, the business manager. We went into last year working under an old contract. She had to do retro pay and get everything all put together in June at the last minute and she did so very well. I praise also for their OPEV contributions as well. This week's meeting, the highlight is going to be going over the PAC year review and just looking at some of the numbers and figures moving back.
And then, on to our always favorite topic, policies.
Hey.
We have a second meeting today on these four.
We do. So, there's four policies listed. You may remember last month, you did a first and second reading of three policies that were missing a word as part of our coordinated program review, and you were kind enough to approve those so we could get them submitted in time. And then, there was a policy that was due at the end of October on curriculum to teach our students about opioid use because of the opioid crisis. We have four other policies that were reviewed by our subcommittee, the Policy Subcommittee. You've had them, last month you voted a first reading of them. If you don't, I haven't heard from any of the four school committees and the other three have approved them as a second reading. If you approve them tonight as a second reading, they will be added into our policy manual and they will become official. If you don't have any questions, if somebody was willing to waive the actual reading of the policies and then to approve a second reading of the policies, that would be granted.
Make a motion to waive the actual reading of the policies. Would you like me to state them by letters?
Sure.
Okay. GBEC, JLCD, JICH, JJF.
Do we have a second? All in favor?
Aye.
Time?
Make motion to accept as a second reading. All see GBEC, JLCD, JICH, JJF.
Do we have a second?
One second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you so much.
Thank you. Capital improvement, do we have anything additional there?
Well, yes, actually, sort of, kind of. How is that for a visual? One of the things that we were starting to realize was how old the phone system is at Dennett. And it's something that we've begun to address. So, we put out a call to Steve Pellot just to start the process of looking at it. And we got one estimate, and this would be a, I'm not going to remember, what is that called when it's?
Voice over IP.
That's it, thank you. I had no idea what voice was. I was like, what language are you speaking? Uh, voice over, bad language. Voice over IP. Did Dennett, I believe, has a system that they no longer make parts for?
It is antiquated at this point.
Really? I didn't think that ever happened.
No joke, the last time that we had to call somebody out because there was a problem, the company that installed it had to call somebody out of retirement to come down and take a look at the system. So, that's a little bit problematic moving forward.
Does it have a dial?
There's a big one in that, in that back room. Absolutely.
Yeah. So, it looks like the quote we got from the voice over IP system, thank you for reminding me of what that was called, is $27,823. So, and I think there is a $4,000 installation fee for a total of, let's just round it to 32. So, that is something that I, we are starting to look at and we may want to recommend as a separate article for town meeting. I don't know if the school committee had any questions or concerns, but phones are sort of the lifeblood and certainly a safety issue in the schools. So, it is something that we have recently updated Silver Lake's phone system, which was extremely antiquated. We recently updated Halifax's and now we're looking at Plimpton and Kingston. There seems to be a certain ground level there, I would like.
Does this price sort of fit into what you've done on the other phones?
Yes. It does. So, I can, if you like, I could share the estimate here, but again, this is just, just the beginning stages, but it is something that, when we were looking at big pictures, it was something that we realized was sort of overdoing Plimpton.
Can they only call rooms around? Do you need to go to separate phones to dial out?
No, I believe every one of the classrooms right now can call out. That was something that we had done retro fit probably five or six years ago. Teachers are spending a lifetime waiting around to use the one phone in the office and prep times were, it was just not a good use of time.
This is something that probably makes sense to let FinCon know because it was not on the capital plan from last year. That said, we know we get satisfied, the control unit that was on the capital, that was put on that capital plan, that doesn't like, set it, but at least it's, that's part of it.
Right, and I apologize, you know, again, we're sort of doing catch-up on some of these things, so.
I guess, I guess in preparation for beginning of next year, I would just encourage, you know, as, as we get to the end of the year, to think of, is there anything else that might be there? Because I would like to, even if we're not, I guess, three to five years out from technology perspective, that we would want to at least make a notation so that FinCon is better and the capital planning committee, which is FinCon, that they have the opportunity to have those numbers for their plan. Because we may get a question as to why we didn't bring this up last year. Kind of is what it is.
Yep.
Okay. Legislative?
We're going to keep this brief. There'll be some obvious impacts, you know, nationwide because of some of the changes in control of the White House and who's going to be appointed to the Department of Education. Just keep your radar tuned and pay attention to what's going on. In more local news, the Suburban Coalition is meeting with all the divisions, including Division 3 of MASC, to talk about the Chapter 7 Review Commission and improve funding for all of our schools in Massachusetts, which Superintendent Black was going to speak to later in our report.
All right, good night long, Mr. Nino.
Thank you very much. Current enrollment at Dennett has stayed at 209 students. We didn't have much movement since last month. As always, we have some important dates coming up. On December 5th, we're going to have in our Citizen of the Month Assembly. Casa will be hosting the Dennett Holiday Bazaar, December 6th and 7th. December 9th, we have our Citizen of the Month Pizza Luncheon, and also that evening, the Girl Scouts Holiday Fair is here from 6 to 9. If you can't make it the first time, you can come the second time on December 10th. That'll be 9 to 3. On December 12th, we have Casa is providing us with an enrichment program, Marvelous Marvin, two shows, one for the younger kids, one for the older kids. Also, report cards will go home with students on the 12th. December 15th, we have our winter concert at 1:30. If you can't make that show, same show at 7:00. And on December 19th, we'll be back here for school committee at 5 o'clock.
Thank you much. Do you have a copy?
I was unable to attend the meeting. I did a brief update at the last reading, they talked about the feast, which I heard was wonderful. I was unable to attend the meeting in that school. And also, that they looked at some bylaws to grow into becoming a PTA. It's probably a PTA. So, they looked at a few of those things.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
You were at the feast. It was awesomer. Yeah, it was, it was a shame to miss it.
It was really good.
One of those days I just couldn't somehow be in Plimpton, so something about being paid.
I had your share, no worries.
Did you have my share?
I had your share.
Good, didn't go to waste. Christine?
Thank you. It's, I'm going to be very quick to start to bring it up to me. As you can see, we've got your lovely buck financial once again. The only thing that I wanted to bring to your attention is on page 3 of the detail. Further down, we have seen a deficit in our homeless transportation account. Are you sure you do have it? Some of that is going on, so we'll call it back for Tuesday then. The other area I want to mention is on page 3 of the detail on the special education under the contract, so, is it now? It's kind of in the middle of the page. It's a deficit of $1,525.20. That's where the department thinks it'll be for the end of the year. That's what they're projecting right now. So, if there are any changes, and if there are any changes, then we'll update you in a moment. And the only other item I want to bring to your attention is on the very last page, the very last data, our out-of-teacher vocational account. Right now, we're projecting a surplus of 47,000. That will stand so long as we don't have any changes or new ones or things like that. But that's based on the population we have right now, that's what we expect to be.
Christine, without getting into too much detail about the homeless transportation, have you done an extrapolation of what the cost could be if it continues throughout the year?
This is two months worth what we're seeing on the financial, so it could be significant. It's just unfortunate these situations, we just don't know what's going to happen. You know, it could change tomorrow or it could change June 15th.
And it's our responsibility. Totally understand, just looking at the implications for the motions.
I mean, we adjusted that a little bit in the last budget year, but not by much.
We decreased it a little bit because we both had one idea of that similar situation.
But if it went for the whole year, we still would have been under budget even.
Correct.
Because I know we dropped it some, but not, wasn't like we brought it down from 20,000 to 2,000. Right. Okay.
Are there any questions? Thank you.
Okay.
Thank you.
On to you.
Well, I think it's, I'm just going to do this setup for the director. I come to receive an update on special education programming. You want to get the clicker? I think it's been thrown. What do I do? I'm so excited. Okay, thank you so much. Maybe just a ten, yeah, sure, it's all right. So, we're lining, sure. So, I just want to start with an overview of just what special education is. As most folks know, special education really means specially designed instruction at no cost to our families to help mitigate for specific learning disabilities that children may have. And when we talk about our student population, it was really a turn age 3 through 22 on their 22nd birthday. That's when we transition children over from school services to adult services. In anticipation of students turning 3, we have an early childhood program that does a lot of networking with some of our early intervention service providers to make sure that any students that are of age are ready to transition seamlessly. So, by their 3rd birthday, we have all of the services in place for them. So, again, special education services is really designed to equal the playing field, if you will, to allow children with bearing disabilities to have equal access to their non-disabled peers. When we talk about what classifies for what allows a child to be eligible to receive special education services, and the state as well as federal regulations require that we follow a very strict guideline for eligibility determination, and a child must present with one of the following disabilities. And again, I can speak to as much detail as you'd like on any of these topics, but each and every one of them is really a topic in and of themselves. But suffice it to say that our special education teams for determining eligibility determination, we look to see if a child has one or more of the disabilities that I noted here. And that's just phase one of our eligibility determination process. We look first and foremost to see if that disability is in existence, documented, and if it is preventing a child to access our general curriculum. And then, if so, we put in steps to try to alleviate some of the symptoms that are creating a barrier to a child with a disability to access the curriculum. So, what I wanted to do is give you a profile from a regional perspective, and this is information that I gave you last year around this time. So, I wanted to make sure that I was comparing apples to apples. So, I took a look at the presentation that I gave to last year at this time and tried to collect the same type of data. And I'm certainly happy to take my data collection in any different direction as you'd like moving forward, but this just captures special education students from a regional perspective from last year at this time to a snapshot of this year at this time. So, you can see for Plimpton, for example, students that are receiving special education services, mainly students that have IEPs or individual educational programs, from FY15 was 53, now for FY16, that is 55. So, we run up this by a couple of numbers. So, what I've done is I've presented slides and you have them in your packet of each of our communities. And of course, I don't want to spend too much focusing on Plimpton, but if you have any questions, you do have Halifax as well as Kingston in your packets. But taking a look at Plimpton, what I've done is I've shown for you, again, for FY15 and 16, a comparison, the number of students that are receiving special education services via an IEP. So, last year, the number of students at Dennett Elementary totaled 32. This year, when I had taken that snapshot of data, it was 36. The number of the little ones that are in the integrated preschool program, last year at this time, we had 12. This year, you have eight. And you have Mr. Benioff and I just met this morning to chat about the preschoolers that are ready, willing, and able to enter the doors of kindergarten in September. So we were just having that transitional conversation this morning. For our in-district substantially separate programs, which I'm going to talk a little bit more about in some later slides, for K six programming, last year at this time, you have three. This year, you have five. And for our out of district placements, just to explain, when I talk about out of district placements, I'm talking about students pre-K through age twenty-two, or age three through twenty-two from Plenton that are being serviced in schools outside of our homeschool community. You currently have six. Any questions with regard to that information as we move forward?
Yes.
I don't have a question as much as the comment I made in Lincoln actually this evening here. The number thirty-six for F Y sixteen in school, students receiving special ed programming, that number is starting to get into my, you know, pay attention. I look at my class sizes and what classroom teachers are looking at for students per teacher. And now I'm looking at how many special education teachers do we have here? And what is their case load looking like considering those kids, you know, for one reason or another, need some more direct instruction in smaller group settings? So it's potentially going to have budgetary implications, and I don't know.
Well, I mean, if out of out there split down the middle, if it's K through two, three through six, and then that skews your numbers, right? So you don't, so it's not an evenly split key slot?
With seven grade levels, we do, one person does four, one person does three.
And so with one special ed teacher for, say, twenty-some-odd kids split at cross-grade levels, that can sometimes be a challenge. To manage the I E P, the meetings, the academics, the direct instruction, the small group, the depth modification, the consultations with the classroom teacher as well, to provide all those services.
The meetings and the testing.
Yeah.
Very certainly, very much that they do, as the community can attest to. Yes. So this does span, as Mr. Benioff said, from kindergarten through grade six. So those thirty-six students span that entire grade span. Any other questions or comments on that slide? As I said, I've done similar slides for Halifax and Kingston. So if you have any questions with regard to the other communities, I'm happy to answer that for you. As we all know, special education can be expensive. And when we're looking at out of district placements in particular, that does probably have the price tag. So going down to Plenton in particular, you can see that there's been a significant decrease, actually, in your out of district tuitions. And even though you have the same number of students from F Y fifteen to F Y sixteen, this really speaks to the fact that all placements are not the same in terms of the costs associated with each one. So in light of the fact that we had a couple of students graduate that had some rather more expensive placements, and in lieu of, as they graduated on, we had a couple of other students that had come on board for some out of district placements. But that's a sharp decrease in the number of internally expenses of out of district placements from F Y fifteen to F Y sixteen. So as you can also see, there's been a slight dip in transportation, not as significant as with regard to the tuitions, but there are many factors that come into play when we look at the transportation costs. We may have situations where a child can be in specialized transportation with maybe five or so other students. However, there are situations where students cannot. And they may require a monitor. They may require a special transportation because they have a wheelchair. So there are a lot of factors that go into coming up with the costs for specialized transportation. So for Plenton, you can see the comparison for F Y fifteen and sixteen.
So for the, I mean, for the different collaboratives, I know there's obviously different programs that require certain students that require much more than other students, and therefore they go to certain programs. But we have some similar programs amongst a couple of different collaborators in the area. Is there a significant difference in the cost per program for similar students sometimes? In other words, does that, does that have like pilgrim, which is sort of our quote-unquote collaborative versus one that's outside of that?
Right, and that's an excellent question. I'm actually going to go back a couple of slides. So for Plenton, as you can see in your packet, I actually broke down the type of placement by the other two communities. Because Plenton has so few students out of district, I felt just for confidentiality reasons, I didn't want to post that. But it's an excellent question that I didn't get a chance to really explain because that piece of the chart wasn't there. So just talking about the type of placement, as you said, you know, there are three different types, if you will, of out of district placement. One is a collaborative, and as you know, the Public Area Collaborative is a collaborative that we happen to be a member of, and that we're getting very solid. Also, within this geographic region, we have Reed's Collaborative, which is located in Millaboro. We have North River Collaborative in Rockland. And we have South Shore Educational Collaborative in Tanum. Those three collaboratives are also very strong collaboratives. We just happen to not be a member of one or all of each of them, which is something that we, we might want to chat about moving forward if we want to expand and maybe become a member of one of our other neighboring community collaboratives. You can be a member of more than one. But Palermo has been wonderful to us. And, you know, each one of the area collaboratives brings about something a little bit different in their programming. So if I have a student that has a particular need, I look at which area collaborative may be able to meet that need. And if it's not one of our area collaboratives, it could be one of our local public schools that has a program that we don't have. Those are my first go-tos because they're closest to the child's homeschool community. And I want to keep our Plenton kids as close to home as possible. So when I do look for an out of district placement, if I need to, I look for what programs are most appropriate that are closest to home. So the students can still access everything that's going on in the community easily. Because the further away they go, the longer their day is, the harder it is to get them home in time to really access what's going on here. So then we also have a third level of programming, which is our private placements, and they tend to be a little bit further away. They could be things like, which is driving down fifty-three, it could be the May Center. It could be the Higashi School in Randolph. It could be the May Center in Rockton and Randolph. So you can see that when we go into the privates, they tend to exist a little bit beyond our community. So again, I first look to see what's in town. And the ones that, to your point with regard to costs, the collaboratives and the public schools are going to be of comparable costs, the privates are more expensive.
From a membership perspective of collaborators, is that, is that, what does that give a district? Do you remember versus not, or does it not matter to you?
It does matter. There is a, I'd say a cover charge to get in. So you do pay a fee to become a member. But a member gets a slightly discounted rate on placements at their particular programs. Or say, for example, I'm looking for a facility to do an evaluation. They have member rates and then non-member rates. So if my go-to is a particular collaborative based on what I'm looking for, if I find myself frequently one collaborative more than another, and if it's not our PAC collaborative, I'll be going to Superintendent Blackwood to say, can we consider becoming a membership with one of our area collaboratives? And again, PAC has been wonderful, and is wonderful, and I would never, I'm not recommending any changes to that membership, but there may be a benefit to an additional membership in one of our other area collaboratives.
Yeah, is what Marie is speaking to is, you know, we try and have layers. Try and make them as thin as possible to keep it at least restricted for our students. But collaboratives and the nature of the South Shore collaborative space is different than the rest of the state. There's a lot of collaboratives on the South Shore. So they've found their niche, or two or three niches. So if we have particular students, and this is one of the things I really admire about Marie and how she's running the stud department, is she finds the program that fits the child and the child's needs. She doesn't try and push the child into a program, she says it makes sense with the numbers. I think that's very wise to keep that open mind.
Well, if you try and force a child into a space because it makes sense, actually, they cost you much more money along the way.
Absolutely, I guess.
You got to do what's right for the child.
Thank you. And we'll chat a little bit later when I talk about with our post-secondary programming of the area collaboratives. Again, every collaborative has its niche. North River Collaborative in particular is, I'll chat about in a couple of slides for now. They're doing a really nice job with our eighteen to twenty-two-year-old population. And I'll chat about that in just a moment. But, you know, again, we want to make sure our eyes are wide open to make sure that we're providing the most appropriate programming for our students. Any other questions about the types of programming? And again, if you have any other questions, I can certainly spend time going back to that. So we chatted a little bit about the expenses of out of district placements. But I also wanted to chat a little bit about how we want to offset some of those costs. And one of the opportunities we have in the Department of Education is what's called a circuit breaker reimbursement. So just to chat very briefly about that. Basically, the Department of Education, elementary and secondary education, they said, we understand out of district placements are very costly. So there is what they consider a reasonable cost for communities to absorb. So they've set that rate by their particular artistic formula that we love. But it's the same rate across the Commonwealth. So it's not just a rate for Plenton or Kingston or Halifax. This is a rate that is set across the board, across the Commonwealth. And for this year, for F Y sixteen, the foundation amount was forty-two thousand eight hundred and forty. So what that means is it's considered reasonable from the department that we can absorb the cost of an out of district placement that goes up to forty-two thousand eight hundred and forty dollars. Okay, let that sink in for a second. Any dollar above that, the state says, okay, we're going to reimburse you a percentage of that. Nothing before the forty-two eight forty. Anything above, you get a percentage of, okay? And that's what they call circuit breaker, or circuit breaker reimbursement. So what you see here is what my claim was for F Y fifteen. And you can see the foundation amount for last year was less than it was for F Y sixteen. So it was forty-one nine nine four. It went up to forty-two eight forty. So for F Y fifteen, if you follow the chart down, my total claim, so looking at all of the students from Plenton that were out of district at that time, my total claim is three hundred and seventy-one thousand dollars. F Y sixteen, it's one hundred and seventy-four. And I think I explained a couple of slides ago that even though we have the same number of students that are currently out of district, the cost of the placements were drastically different. So therefore, what my claim was for Plenton was reduced. Based on their formula, you subtract the net claim per placement. So again, if it's not forty-two eight forty, I don't have it as a consideration to put on a circuit breaker claim. It has to be that foundation amount plus. So there's the, you can see the total claim in Plenton, the net claim, and the anticipated reimbursement. And the reimbursement, as I said, for every dollar we spend above the forty-two eight forty, we get a certain percentage. The state likes to hold out that information for as long as possible before they tell us what that reimbursement is. It can range, I've seen it at fifty-two percent, I've seen it seventy-two percent, and anywhere in between. It depends on how much money the state has that particular year and how they want to do it.
So basically, despite this formula and the foundation thing, they have a certain amount of money they're going to give back to, a percentage of it back to. It's got nothing to do with any of this other craziness. It's really.
They're paying you for last year.
Yeah, right.
Yeah.
So it's just, so it's a limited pot, and that's what they're giving back. Because the whole thing is kind of silly.
Absolutely.
Oh, you should be able to absorb forty-two thousand, but then we're going to give you a percentage? Well, if you can only absorb forty-two thousand, you got to absorb fifty-five.
And nothing is covered for transportation. You get nothing back for transportation. So you completely absorb transportation. That's not, that doesn't need factoring at all.
I hate games.
Yeah, pretty much. Try building a budget around this stuff. It's a lot of fun, huh, Marie?
So this is what form of reimbursement, as limited and complicated as it is. The other is that we have an entitlement grant that is earmarked specifically to support students that are receiving special education services. So I've given you some historical information here in terms of what the town of Plenton has received over the last few years in the total allocation for the region. And you can see, if you just look across for Plenton, it's been pretty consistent over the last few years. But this is another opportunity for us to try to offset some of our special education costs. And we try to apply the funding to our salaries for our parent professionals that are working directly with our special education students and teachers. So that's, in addition to circuit breaker, this is another way to try to help offset the costs. Any questions about the last two slides? So I spoke to you a little bit last year about the programming that currently existed from a regional perspective. My hopes and desires of where I would like to see us move so we can have a full complement and a real continuum of services for the students here in the region. And everyone here in the region was so incredibly supportive of our quest to develop a language-based learning disability program. So I thank everyone that had been in support of that program. It's often running to a great start. So I just wanted to give a recap of where we are, and then summarize with what our next steps are and where I hope to see us go. So as I shared with you last year, one of our strongest programs from a continuum standpoint is what we refer to as to our developmental learning system. And then as we get up to the upper grades, it's called the goals program of high school. It's for the population of students that have some intellectual challenges, some cognitive challenges, that have a variety of needs, as they near the third grades. But we have a program for our communities at Kingston Elementary. We also have a program for our communities at Kingston Intermediate. And, you know, as I mentioned, that we also have an expanding program up through the high school. And you can see by the current student enrollment, we have a full complement of students in each of the programs at each of the grade levels. The other profile of a program that we have is what's referred to as the Structures Learning Center. I kind of like to think of this more of a therapeutic learning center. It's for students that are of average cognitive ability, but may struggle with some social, emotional issues and behavioral challenges that need a little bit more than what can be provided in a larger classroom setting. So we provide for them that opportunity. And we have a very strong program at Kingston Intermediate. And as students are moving from sixth grade into seventh grade, we're starting to build the foundations for a similar program at the middle school. And then, as I mentioned at the beginning, our language-based learning center, which I'm, again, very thankful for the support to bring this program to fruition. We have a very strong teacher. We have a really nice foundation for the program, and it's going very, very well. And we are anticipating the students that are currently sixth graders moving up to the middle school and looking right now to see how best to plan for them at the middle school. In terms of my English thoughts for a little bit, clearly, we have a nice, solid foundation for a variety of programming and. for a variety of programming. And as we take a look at that programming at a K to six level, we want to make sure that we're laying the foundation to support these students as they move into the middle and high school grades. So expansion of our structured learning center and our language-based learning center are certainly on my top priority list. Taking a look at the needs of the expanding integrated preschool program, it's bursting at the seams at the moment. So we're trying to forecast, which is challenging to do, how many little ones might be turning three, assessing how many of our students are going to be transitioning into the kindergarten programs, and just making sure that our integrated preschool program is as solid as we can possibly make it. And also advertising for peer models to come into that program, because it's very important that we have our peer models in that integrated preschool program. Some early conversations have been about taking a look at that transition that some of our little ones have from that preschool program into the kindergarten program. So we're just assessing that right now and collecting data right now to see if there's more that we can do to help bridge the gap. This is very, very early conversation. There's no real plan in place, but just starting the conversation of, is there more we can do for our little ones as they transition from preschool? Taking a look at the current contracted services for occupational therapy and physical therapy. Right now, in terms of related services, we look at occupational therapy, physical therapy, and speech-language. We look at behavioral supports from behavioral analysis. But really, the OT and PT is contracted. Other services, they are embedded within our local budget. So I'm thrilled with the personnel that we have for OT and PT. I'm happy with the company that we have, but I would be doing a disservice to the communities if I didn't take a step back to make sure that it was the most financially responsive way to approach the related services that we have as contracted. So I'm going to just explore that a little bit, just to make sure that things are on par with the services that we need for our students. And then, as I mentioned earlier, about programming for our eighteen to twenty-two-year-old students, you know, right now, we have a couple of different options, and I just want to make sure that we're exploring everything in its entirety. We have options outside of Silver Lake Regional High School, and I'm not sure if there's more we can do within the brick-and-mortar of the building, or how we can help bridge that transition. But we have two excellent, excellent opportunities for our students that are eighteen to twenty-two. One is through North River Collaborative. They have a wonderful community vocational program where they bring students out to the community to try and experience different job sites. It could be a restaurant, it could be a horticulture, an automotive center, just to give them that experience of what work-life could be like. And as I've shared with others, they've been so successful in training and supporting our students. The employers have been so impressed that over the years, there have been a number of students that have been asked to become employees at some of the voc sites that they've participated in. So it's a very, very nice, solid program. Now, the other opportunity for our students that are eighteen to twenty-two are accessing what's called the ICE program. It's a grant that is supported through Bridgewater State University and the Department of Ed to allow some of our students of that age range that might not otherwise access a college campus to have that experience of taking a college course. And we have three students currently involved, and they're doing a fabulous job. And every time I talk to our representatives at Bridgewater State, they always say to me, the students from Silver Lake are amazing. So, great opportunities there.
Excellent.
Any questions? I'm sure you'll be asking shortly about goals that you may have, and certainly keep in mind in special education program ideas that you'd like me to explore. I'm open to anything.
Thank you.
That's great.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
It's really...
Is that your fourth time?
What? Congratulations.
No.
It's a good thing we got it in in November, because the first page does say November. I would've had to change my slide.
But no, I think it's very helpful for us to sort of hear that, you know, once a year to sort of get an update, but also for the community to hear it. I mean, there's a lot of work being done, and I think the, you know, the program is really on solid ground and moving forward, and that's great. So thank you.
John, I'd like to say too, is, you know, when we go to town meetings, over the, some years I've been there, there's been a lot of discussion with the program. I'd like to remind everybody that these are people of our community too, that, you know, they're members of our community. And when people get up and they bash the program, I just think it's, needs to be said that they are members.
Right. And we certainly understand the financial challenges that the system, and it's not our system, it's the state's system, pose, and it isn't right, and it doesn't work, but we do what we can with it. You know, a lot of the problems would be solved if this wasn't done at a, you know, town-by-town level, because you have, you have very great differences in schools that have a large population of kids, where the worst, you know, it absorbs the up and down. And in a town like Plington, where we have two-hundred-and, you know, nine enrolled students plus the kids that are in special ed, you know, one child can radically change the difference. I mean, looking at Halifax's numbers, they had a huge jump. And that's, that's hard to manage in small towns. So while we understand that, we're doing, I think, really, everything we can here to try and make sure we do not only what is best for these members of our community, but also to make sure we're doing it as financially, you know, responsibly as we can. And that's, that's huge. So, thank you. All right, now you got a lead after that.
I know. This is tough. Thank you. Wow. I did just wanna say also, on the phone system, I'm not sure if capital was the best place for it, or if it would be a separate warrant article like we did the cameras last year. And that was part of why I brought it up. I realized when I brought it up in capital. I don't believe when we did the phone, the cameras last year, they were part of capital, but...
I think that's more...
It's all the same amount of money, but...
No, it's more terminology from a town perspective.
Okay.
Because any large expenditure really has to be part of the capital planning...
Okay.
From a town perspective.
Sure.
And then also, something like this would probably be considered, if FinCom saw fit, to look, to take that out of the capital purpose fund...
Okay.
Rather than out of general fund.
Okay.
Which is, that's the monies that are, that are put aside from the industrial park tax receipts, or some of it.
Excellent. So we'll add this when we do our actual presentation, but this is something that, again, it isn't, that it isn't working currently. The key is always to fix it before that happens.
Yes. Everyone using their cell phones isn't gonna be...
No, it's not gonna work as well as you might hope.
A day or two, but it's about it. So, but I think the, I think the point is just to get ahead of that.
Yes.
And then, and then we'll have to see how, what's going on this year, whether it has to be planned. Just as I think about that, Peter, is there any way, or is it because this is a more antique system, if you have an issue with the phone, there isn't a way to forward that phone to another phone? Which is, which is the type of thing you can, that's, one of the benefits with voice-over-internet is that, you know, if you have an issue with the system in the building, I would think it would be, and should be a requirement, that you can have that forwarded to a cellphone here at the school so that the calls still come in, even if you're having a systems issue. I mean, I have my own, my work phone is, it rings in two places. It rings at my office, and it rings on here, and I choose whichever one I wanna answer. And that's a lot of the benefits you get with having this sort of type of thing, but, because that, that's another piece, is that you have a critical issue, is that when the phones have gone down, I see the email that comes out and says, our phones are down, and all that. And so that does create, you know, create an added challenge for what we have now.
Absolutely. Just to speak to the town trying to plan more long-term, the assistance of the Carlisle Group, when Lynn asked her question, I think, of the teachers could call outside of the building, it wasn't just because of the line in the office, it was also for security...
Right.
And emergency reasons, so...
When you think of Alice training and all that kind of stuff, that flow of information is extremely important.
With our conversations last year with FinCom about trying to update some of our security situations here, that could be embedded into that conversation, you know, because it is, it is a safety concern. You know, it's not just communication with the parents about what early days, it could be more, more poignant things.
Right.
And sometimes cell services, I don't know how everybody's worked, but I know in the district that I am, like, if I turn the corner, I don't have it.
Yeah.
If I turn back around, I look, I don't have it.
Concrete and steel schools were used for hollow shelters for a reason, for a good stopping radiation.
So that, you know, you can afford it to a cell, but I'm not sure that everybody would have access to it.
The office seems to produce for my service, the office works fine, but you get down to the back of the building and it gets a little sketchy. Because it isn't, it isn't fantastic even out front, outside of the building. It's not bad, and it's not great, so, I mean, there's challenges.
So I just wanted to ask if there are any budget priorities that the school committee would like us to consider as we are in the process of building the budget?
Well, as I brought up during Marie's presentation, for Peter, who knows best probably out of the staff, is to keep an eye on the special ed case loads for our, our staff. You know, if necessary, we might have to look at ways to address that issue.
True.
You may remember when we added the teacher plus four years ago?
Three.
Three? I mean, we had one person for seven grades before that.
Superintendent Blackwood, I said when I came to the school committee, was it looks like we were a little low in the special ed department.
Right, right.
And I was informed promptly that they'd just added a staff for the special ed department. And I was horrified to understand how much work the person who was alone had to do prior to that.
Seven grades.
And we're, we're moving away from the dark ages into the eighteen hundreds, and hopefully, with, with good programming and good management and good staff, we can handle it the way it is now, but we need to keep our nose to the grindstone on that. We have great ratios for student pupil in the classrooms. We need to maintain that for our special teachers.
Are there any other areas that you'd like us to make sure to look at and think about as we're building our numbers?
I just, just had a question about the water treatment. It's, is this gonna be a problem that we're not gonna have our money?
I think we, I think we don't know yet. I think we will hopefully have a much clearer idea on that in a week.
I believe this week.
But, you know, the bid that, that did come in was so out of scope from what you would, what was expected and what was estimated back when. I mean, I was, this was before I was on the school committee when they did that work, but it seemed really out of sorts. Like, oh, we'll throw some bid in there, maybe it'll take it, because we don't really want the work type of bid. So I think if, if we see a similar, or even with somewhere even near that range, then we, we will have to figure out what the next steps are there, and why, it's why things are done. I think that's the other piece. But I think before we react to that bid that we did get, it's important to make sure we're, it's grounded, because it seems not so at this point. So yeah, it's a potential, but we're not gonna ring the alarm bells until we actually say it down.
It just seems, we've stopped, it's, it's gonna be fine out next week or whatever.
Well, and then we're having the same sort of issue, and this is the same issue we have with trying to find the consultant too, and there's just a lack of people bidding. So we reached out to, what, five or six companies?
Originally, we did.
This time to, well, but even this time, to get bids, and we just haven't heard from anybody.
We did, we reached out to everybody that bid originally, just to tell us...
And we got one back?
Yes.
Right. So, you know, this is, this is gonna be our sort of level set, and if it doesn't, well, then we'll be talking about, well, we'll be talking about incentive programs, and hopefully we have some good news to be able to move forward and get this down, since it's all the time. We just need it put in.
Anybody else have any ideas or thoughts you'd like us to make sure to consider?
We're planning on keeping on the programs we have. We're very happy with our school, with all the teachers and all the programs that we have, and will bring forward a fiscally responsible budget like we did last year. And if you remember last year, or if I remember correctly, I think it actually was a decrease. I'm not sure that will be happening this year, because I don't think you can maintain that. But, you know, we, we will continue to monitor the programs that we have and make sure that we're providing what all the students need for Plington and staff.
Are there any, are there any additional sort of, I know we have the textbooks, is it...
Science.
Science, so is there, is there another slew of these things coming in the foreseeable or perhaps in the next couple of years?
The only thing that I'm aware of that I believe may be happening is grade six science. The science program we bought was K-5, and we're looking at six through eight now, so I'm not sure if...
Because we wanted to line that with the middle school, so that it was a better transition.
Exactly. So I'm not sure if we will have that in time, but that's the only thing that I'm...
And that would be a, that would be a small, much smaller chunk, because you got about one grade.
Yeah, just grade six. Exactly. Exactly. So that number should be a lower figure in the textbook line item.
And I'm sure we're always going to be doing this anyways, but we, I would assume that part of the discussion will be from a technology perspective, to make sure that we're continuing to do the wonderful things that we've been able to do in getting the computers into the classrooms, to be able to do the testing, to support that.
Absolutely, yeah. We're very lucky that we have a tech director who's a great little shopper, so he does a really nice job of keeping us, keeping us all in line there, so, no, I think we're in pretty good shape there. So if no one else has any other additions on that, actually, I'm going to move, if it's okay, because this sort of lines up with finances a little out of order, is the Mass Rural Public School aid proposal. So there is a, a group of superintendents that all run for rural public schools. They've been meeting probably over the last year, and they meet mostly in the western part of Massachusetts. I follow it, but I have not been able to take the time to drive the three hours or so to the meetings, I, I'm sorry, now I'm slipping, for them. But they put together a public school aid proposal, and it's really a group that is small but mighty. And I sent out the three handouts that they had. I didn't print out the third one, which is a very large document, but you have it as an email attachment if you'd like to read it. I just wanna tell you a little bit about what it is. The rural public schools are really sort of in crisis conditions. Plington, so you know, is considered a tier two. Halifax is considered a tier three, okay, in terms of where we fit in, in terms of rural public schools. There's been a decline in student enrollments in the small rural public schools. Out in the western part of the state, many of the schools have actually had to close. They've had to condense schools because of declining enrollment. The Chapter 78, however, has really remained flat, like, there hasn't been increases, and it certainly hasn't kept up with the rising operating costs. For instance, in Plington, if we have, whether we have thirty-five students or whether we have forty students in a class, you still will have two teachers. But those extra five students, you won't receive any Chapter 78. So when the small enrollment decreases, it really impacts when you're a small school to start with, because you still have to heat the building, you still have to provide the textbooks, you still have to pay the teachers. So it's, it makes it very difficult to maintain the buildings. There has been some, the aid philosophy was designed for urban districts. That's really what Chapter 70 was designed for, not so much the Halifax's and Plington's of the world. So in terms of who fits into the rural public schools, there's about a hundred thousand students who are in rural schools. It's about ten percent of the entire population, and there's about fifty thousand that attend them in severe fiscal crisis. So this committee put together a remedy which would look at the Chapter 70 program, has an eligibility criteria, there's tiered allocations, and very targeted aid. As I mentioned, Plington fits into tier two. If the proposal goes through, it would mean an extra five hundred dollars per student in Plington, which is Chapter 78, which would go directly to the town. For Plington, that would really be a nice win for the town. I feel reasonably confident the town would not turn down any additional money they receive from the state. What I would be looking for us to do is to vote on the back of the page with the little school bus, there's an actual resolution which would support this work... school bus, there's an actual resolution which would support this work that is going through. This is really the very beginning stages. I have no idea what the chances are of this going through, just so you understand. There is a senator out in western Mass who is working with the group. He's going to be moving the proposal forward. I will also send it to Representative Coulter. I'm going to present this in Halifax. There's a couple pieces I'm not 100% clear on. I have an email out to them. I'm not clear if the money will follow the students as they go into Silver Lake because it's designed for rural public schools, so I'm, I'm not really clear if that, I honestly don't know the answer. I know, I honestly.
I mean, it, that seems like, it seems like it wouldn't based on anything that I read from that, but.
I agree. I'm not sure.
It doesn't, yeah.
It would be nice if it did.
Right.
But I don't know the answer to that, so I'm going to preempt by saying, I honestly don't know if anybody was going to ask that question, which Jason might have, I don't know. Maybe you know the answer. Do you know the answer?
From what I understand, it would not.
Okay.
The idea that this proposal is actually to prevent small towns from regionalism because you lose that hometown flavor, community resource for the community as a whole when you lose your schools and your towns, which is happening in western Massachusetts at an alarming rate. But it's also been brought up here. And why don't we have a regional elementary school? And it gets back to a lot of the conversations we've had tonight. Our wonderful class sizes, the environment in this building, the Thanksgiving feast, the time on the school lessons for most of the kids, you know? That's why we have our nice little Denny Elementary School for a beautiful little rural town. It is the, the crown jewel of our town.
And, and for each of the, each of the towns in the district, they each have their own school to build that community and build up.
Absolutely.
Grade six and then move into the regional system and whether that be how they do it in Kingston, given their size versus how it has to support them.
Absolutely. So this is actually based on a process that happened in Wyoming, I believe, was the state that successfully bought this in and was, was able to provide some additional money for some, some of their school systems out there. So all I would be looking for this evening is if the committee is interested, is to support the resolution and that you would support the coalition in moving forward with the, with the concept of trying to secure some additional chapter 78 for the town. If you voted to support this, I will then forward it to the selectmen and the finance committees of the town. What I wanted to do though was to give it to you first, to see if the school committee wished to vote to support it. As I mentioned, I will be bringing this forward to Halifax. Halifax is a tier three, Halifax is a little bigger. Both Plimpton and Halifax received the REAP grant. You may remember when we're building budgets, we always talk about how one of the teachers, about 50% is funded. It's actually no longer even close to 50%, to be honest with you, but that was, but back when you were original grade King through, it was 50% of a teacher's salary. In Halifax, we use the money for technology. Halifax was way behind the curve on technology, so we've been able to use some money for that there. But it's, it's again, as we're all looking to build budgets and we're looking to offset expenses, this is a creative, innovative way that is not costing us anything to try to secure the town some additional funds. And I would urge us to try to support the resolution. I don't know if anybody had any questions or concerns about it.
And, I mean, from, from my perspective, it makes complete sense to do that.
Okay.
I mean, and, and I think it also, it's also important for selectmen of the finance committee and residents of town to understand that, that this is the type of things that the administration is looking at all the time. I mean, where there's grants available to try and get them. In this instance, by supporting this, you know, whether it gets through, whether we ever see any of this, that's a whole separate thing, but by supporting this sort of thing, it's to try and, try and deal with what we're all dealing with.
Exactly.
It costs a lot to do this and you can't change a lot of those costs.
No.
So, I mean, this is, I think it's great that this is brought forward and even keeping track of this, so.
Excellent. So I don't know, it sounds like Jason has a cold, his voice sounds very different this evening, but if somebody was up for reading the resolution, I think it would probably be appropriate just to read it out loud if, if whoever makes the motion doesn't mind doing that.
I'll read it for you, sir.
Mr. Chair, would you like to make the motion?
Yeah, I mean, I would, I would, I would make a motion particularly since, I'm not sure how, how your voice is doing, whether you'll allow it tomorrow, but it's kind of important given your line of work.
Yeah.
But I, I would, I would move that we support this resolution, which is resolution supportive Massachusetts rural schools. And it reads on, it says, "Strong local communities are the best habitat for excellence in education and education is the responsibility of the whole community." So whereas all children should have access to equitable and equal educational opportunities regardless of where they live, whereas all students should be engaged in excellent academic programs that guide them to understand the place where they live and to help build stronger and better communities, whereas schools should be accessible to students' homes governed by the people they serve, they serve with leadership that reflects the composition of the community, financed to ensure excellent outcomes, maintained and designed for full community participation, whereas teachers should be prepared to instruct and lead in a rural setting, content and culturally competent, able to connect learning with place and compensate fairly, whereas assessment should be designed to inform and influence learning and instruction, measuring student progress and teacher performance using multiple methods, whereas technology should be used to increase interaction between and among local places with universal access to telecommunications services. Therefore, be it resolved that the Plimpton School Committee admits support of the Massachusetts Rural School Initiative." Do I have a second to quote this resolution?
A second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Excellent, thank you very much. I assume that means that you support the work of the coalition going forward?
Yes, done what you've seen so far.
Excellent.
Yes?
Great, thank you. So I will forward this to the coalition and I'll type up the resolution and forward it in there and it'll be part of the minutes too, which Gail's taking, which we'll forward to them, so.
And then you'll be reaching out to FinCom and stuff?
I'll be talking to FinCom and the selectmen. And is Christine Joy the chair of the second chair?
Uh, it is Colin Thompson.
Colin Thompson's. Thank you.
And I mean, I think, I think this is good anyways because it's, it's good to show that we're trying to.
Right.
Do what we can.
Yep. And Sue is chair of finance, right?
I believe so.
I'm surprised.
I don't believe that's changed.
Thank you. Excellent. Thank you for doing that. Let's see. I didn't know, Jason, if you wanted to talk about the conference update. Marie, Christine and I, Christine and I were able to go for a couple of days and attend some of the workshops. I actually didn't, wasn't there on Wednesday for the delegate vote, so.
Okay, no problem. So there was four resolutions brought before the delegate assembly. The first resolution was about the foundation budget, chapter 70, which was designed for an ed reform when the early 90s took place and hasn't been really addressed since that point. And we just addressed it tonight in one fashion. The way that MASCE had addressed it with the state legislatures, there was actually a review commission set up where they addressed some of the needs and they realized to meet the current 2015, 2016 Massachusetts public schools, we'd have to increase funding to public schools by roughly $2 billion per year at a state level. State legislature said they'd be more than happy to do that if we could find the funding.
Start thinking.
So resolution one was to continue to press forward with the foundation budget review commission's findings and to continue to pursue avenues with the state legislature. Resolution two is actually talking about tax ballot initiatives moving forward, including the fair share tax plan. MASCE voted to support the plan. It did come down to a hand count vote of 67 to 41. The next vote was on charter school reform. It had a lot to do with question two. MASCE voted to vote no, wanted to, supported that measure. Resolution four was on social emotional well-being and informing partnerships within the state resources, kind of wraparound services to continue looking at ways to support our students and their social emotional learning development and care. And that was unanimously passed. And the whole point of the conference was around social emotional learning and the impact that we're seeing on students for a variety of reasons with increased anxiety, attentional issues and depressive issues and in ways in which districts, classroom teachers and even parents can help address these issues with students and what resources are already there that many of us aren't even aware of and what resources might need to be developed moving forward in the future. It was a very heavy conference, but there was a lot of hope wrapped into it as well.
Excellent. And then the last thing I wanted to present was digital report cards. Even though you have a, a ream of paper sitting before you, one of the things that I've been trying to do is to use a little less paper. And so one of the things that we are moving towards is to present our report cards for elementary students digitally. So on the secondary level in, at the high school, the students received their progress reports last year digitally and the parents are receiving their report cards digitally this year. What happens is you receive, well, what will be happening on the elementary level is you receive an email and it will say on the email, if you have two children, it'll say the child's first name and you have to put in the child's birthday to open up a locked PDF. So no one but you would be able to open up that locked PDF. And then the child's report card would be there. Printing out report cards is an incredibly onerous task. I don't know how else to say it. It is a tremendous amount of work to print out all the students' report cards, fold them, put them in the envelopes, make sure they get home to the right students. On the secondary level, we also mail them. And so it is something that is going to save a tremendous amount of time and energy. It'll save a lot on the copiers. It's, it is, you know, if you think about Plimpton, there's 209, but if you go into Kingston, I mean, we're talking over 1,000 at secondary level. It's, it's pretty impressive what we have to go through in terms of printing them out. We would like to test it, this report card. So the students on the elementary level, I think report card date is December 12th, is that right, Liz? Is the report card, it's the 12th? Yes, okay. Report cards are December 12th and what we'd like to do is in the report card, send a small note to the parents and let them know that we're going to do a test or pilot sending out the email report card. So there'd be a note in the report card envelope letting parents know. And then on the 14th, you would get an email two days later. We sent a reminder email out on the 13th, sort of why we're staggering it, by the way. And then on the 14th, you'd get an email to your home email account, which is set up, you know, as your emergency card through Alert Solutions. And you would get the email which would say, you know, your child's report card is available. You would enter in the code, the PDF would unlock. If you don't have an email address, you would continue to get a hard copy or if you chose not to receive it digitally. However, I have to say, and I think Lynn, you're shaking your head, so I think you have a child on the secondary level, don't you?
I do.
It has worked very successfully on the secondary level. I would love for us to start using less paper and to start thinking about some of the things we're printing. I had asked John if it was okay if I didn't print out that large rural schools publication, again, just to try to save some paper, but we are trying to be a little more conscious of being green and trying to make a little better use of some of our resources. So it's, it's small steps, but this is one that I think we can be very successful at and I think most people will be comfortable with. So it's really just to let you know that we'll be moving forward with that. I don't actually need a vote.
I'd love to process though.
Great.
It's a great idea, sending it up the traditional way with that little note.
Yeah.
Letting people get both perspectives.
Yes.
And the John Creed thing that if you want, have it hard copied, you can still have it.
Absolutely.
Yes, but negative consent.
Pardon me?
Negative consent.
Yes.
Giving it this way unless you tell us.
Yes, exactly. Yes, I'm sorry, took me a minute to process what you said.
Well, yeah, we, you're the big issue if you look for positive, same as a lot of people won't.
Right, absolutely.
Do it or just don't get around to it or whatever. And you, you lose a lot of traction there.
Absolutely, yeah.
And I had mentioned this to you just briefly as we were communicating about this. Another thing that I think we should look into is for this stuff.
I, I would be happy if it didn't need to be.
And maybe not everybody can do it, but, you know, I will admit wholeheartedly that when I had to clean up my desk, which I do not enough, I end up finding piles of this stuff and I end up throwing it or throwing it away or whatever. And to have it as a digital file would, for me at least, be preferable because then I can store it and it's easier for me to find when I want to go back to it because I do not, I know some people go into a binder and all that, it, it doesn't happen. Okay? It just, it just doesn't.
As long as we can get on the staff wifi.
Yes.
Well, that would be, that would be part of it too.
Because I ask password, keeps changing on me and I keep having problems.
Yeah, no, I mean, I think that would be, that would be part of a, that would be part of, you know.
Absolutely.
Solution that we would be able to, you know, you come in and everything would work. And we're actually doing this at my firm right now. We got, this was decided that we're done with the damn paper.
Yeah.
They just, they just went through and said, look, don't print.
What?
And if we find you printing, they can track everything now because of my bad attitude to print.
Cool.
And so people are, I mean, people have cut way back. Even though this is probably the fifth time they've tried, this time apparently it got heard.
Yeah.
And so many people are bringing laptops or iPads or things to rooms and, because what happens is too, usually someone goes and prints out for a meeting, so they print out 15 copies.
Sure.
And then 14 of the people that come bring copies.
Sure.
So you have.
That's exactly what happens.
Twenty pages present and you get this huge stack that gets sent out at the end. So if we can look to that, I mean, some of the things you can do is if everything is a PDF, to, to combine it, you can just select all of them and you can right-click and it will autocombine them. So there's, there's some ways to do it, so, because I know it will be a little bit of work to get into that, producing it.
Yeah, I, you know, again, if the committee's interested, you know, we can think a little bit more about it. I don't know if everyone has their own device, I, or we could make one available. Here? We certainly have Chromebooks. So we could, we could work out some options if the committee wants to think a little bit about that. You would be a very easy committee to do as a test and pilot.
Yeah.
You know, so it's something we could look towards. I'm not sure if we could go 100%, but we could do some baby steps.
We can, we can see where we go because I would think we, I would think each meeting even for Plimpton is a ream of paper.
It, it.
I mean, if you take all of it and put it together.
Yeah.
I mean, that's, plus, and forget about that, that's not even the expensive parts, the torn.
Yeah, exactly. No, it is, absolutely.
So, torn and maintenance and all that.
Right.
And I think if we are talking about, you know, green things, we should be looking to that.
Absolutely, yep. Right. And I know the teachers have been doing that much more with Chromebooks and, you know, we're not printing out or using as much paper as we're used to, so.
So, yeah, that would be, yeah, that, that's, I didn't think about that. That would be a great solution for folks to come have.
Right. I mean, we could just use Chromebooks here if they have devices at home. You know, and you could just decide what of it you may want printed, but again, we don't have to necessarily make that decision today, but it's something we could, we could work towards. I think it'd be great.
This is a little old business, a little current business, segue onto the green stuff. How the trades been working out, Peter?
We haven't had any complete, Pam used that last year's stock with the older trades, so I think they actually, it was probably the middle of October that the new ones were being used. I haven't seen a problem, I haven't heard of any problems, so that, that seems to be a working solution.
So we're going to obviously continue forward with those next year's purchases.
Absolutely.
I watched you use that old stuff, but that was always.
Yes.
And then that's sort of, yeah, that's a nose despite face type of thing.
Yeah.
For all this stuff.
Right, right, yeah.
We're pretty paid for, yes, that's great.
Yeah.
On the, on the digital report card, Peter, our phone system, can you, can we call out? Or just, you know, I don't care, whatever. Play. I would get it from the middle school. You'll say.
Oh, he can make calls.
Put the report cards.
Sure.
And you get that, you get the email, so, you know, it's just another reminder.
Yeah.
You know, my cell phone rings and I go, my report cards are out.
Right.
Check my email.
Yeah. Yeah, I, I, again, for anybody who has children on the secondary level, they're more used to accessing Power School, et cetera. On the elementary level, most of the teachers don't actually use Power School the way you access it to put the grades in, so it's, it's a whole different process on the elementary school, but we.
I just said, no, our phone system was so old.
Oh, it's not quite that bad, but it's close. But this, this we see as a step in the right direction.
Okay, great.
So.
Excellent.
Thank you. Anything else?
Okay. Anything for anyone else? Do we have any for an executive session?
I do not believe we have anything to talk about that.
Motion to the chair.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you, good night.